All right, thank you all for your patience while we were getting the setup. Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, May 6, 2025, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we'll move into roll call. Since Mayor Turnbull is signed in remotely, I will turn it over for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowie?
Present.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Present.
Commissioner Shanks?
Present.
Commissioner Urquia?
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull, I'm sorry, Mayor Turnbull?
Present.
And Chairman Wiggins?
I am present, thank you. All right, so for the purposes of this evening, we have seven, that was 7-0. We have no personal appearances scheduled, that was item four, so we'll move right into item five, Consent Agenda, Approval of Minutes from the April 15, 2025 meeting. I would entertain a motion to dispose of that item, please. Anybody feel free?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was just going to make a motion that the, that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Turnbull, second by Vice Chair Pfizer, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion of the item? Seeing none, I guess again, we will turn to a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Harrison?
Here.
Either I, yes, no, or abstention for approving the minutes from the last meeting.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanks?
Yes.
Commissioner Urquia?
Aye.
Mayor Turnbull?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiggins?
Yes, so that will pass 6-0-1, thank you. We do have one item of unfinished business this evening, that's item six, which is case number 25007, Hibner Acres Lot 1B rezoning, C2 to C2P. That was a public hearing that we did open, do we open the public hearing last time? We did not, okay, thank you, Mr. Zur. So this is a public hearing, so we will open that this evening at 6:07 PM, and we will continue that item, at which point I would ask the applicant or the city to please, please present the case.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight before you have a planning application submitted by the property owner and applicant, Mike Blythe of Out Branch Properties LLC. The property tonight in question is described as Hibner Acres Lot 1B. It's generally located southeast of West Pine and Rice Streets. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from C2 general commercial to C2P general commercial planned, with a concept plan illustrating the general layout and design of the development. Surrounding the property are C2 zoning districts to the north with a sport and recreational participant land use. To the south is also C2 general commercial with small retail sales. Directly to the east is C2 general commercial that has a gas station and retail sales. And finally, to the west is the R2 single and two-family residential district that is occupied by a single-family detached dwelling. The subject property is approximately 1.96 acres in size. Back on March 26, 2025, a good neighbor meeting was held where city staff, the applicant, and one guest joined the meeting. That guest was the resident directly west of the subject property. During the meeting, the guests did voice support for the project. On February 12, 2025, the Board of Zoning Adjustment voted to approve a variance of use for the subject property to allow the construction, sales, and service land use on the property, which was requested by the applicant to permit his business branched-out gutters and other contractor businesses to be able to locate there. The Board of Adjustment conditioned their approval by excluding a list of uses from the property which is provided in the staff report that would normally be allowed in C2 general commercial zoning districts. A second condition was that the applicant must submit an application to rezone the property to C2P to establish development standards, provide a concept plan, and lastly, a more detailed site plan. The final condition was the rezoning application must have been submitted within one year of the approval of the Board of Adjustment, and if the rezoning was denied by the City Council, the variance would become void. The city's future land use map designates the subject property as commercial, which is defined as areas most appropriate for retail uses, offices, and most commercial businesses. The rezoning request to C2P and associated concept plan meets the general intent outlined in the growth management plan. It allows the property to be used in some expanded capacities for flex commercial and office space, with associated storage spaces for materials and equipment while limiting other more intensive commercial and industrial uses. The development of this vacant parcel will add to the city's tax base without adding public infrastructure to the city's current system, as it already is served by public utilities and streets. It will add a leasable square footage to the city's portfolio of buildings designed for small businesses, which is a building type that currently has pent-up demand. This product provides a flexible style of space to meet the needs of smaller and newer businesses in the city, including offering storefront commercial space with options for storage of material goods or equipment. Given the request is to rezone the property to a P designation, Section 415.10E1, Menu of Planned District Design Elements and Amenities requires that newly established planned districts provide a minimum of three public enhancements and streetscape features. The menu of enhancements include, one, a public plaza that includes seating areas and is at least 3,000 square feet in area; two, public art such as sculptures or fountains; three, a clock tower; four, bike pathways in addition to required public sidewalks and bike paths in compliance with the city's transportation plan and Parks Master Plan; five, bike parking facilities; six, ornamental parking lot lighting; seven, decorative pavers for pedestrian crosswalks. Staff believes, given the development's unique location and type, the requirements of this section should be waived in exchange for other improvements to the project that would be a more discernible impact on a project of this smaller scale, including an enhanced screening wall along the west property line, as shown on the concept plan. The screening wall will also include landscaping on its exterior or west side to help soften its appearance to the neighboring residential use. In addition to the screening wall enhancement, the applicant has also agreed that no outside storage of materials or merchandise or debris on the property, which would be generally permitted within the existing zone and district, would be allowed. The applicant has also agreed to submit a master sign plan for the development with the final site plan. This sign plan will establish the design requirements for all tenants of the property to ensure signage is consistent in size, font, color, elimination, and type. Section 415.10E3 gives the Planning and Zoning Commission the authority to waive one or more of the design standards for the P District, including the menu of planned district design elements and amenities. Staff recommends the Commission consider the exchange of improvements for the required public enhancements and streetscape features previously mentioned, as those enhancements and features will likely not be enjoyed by the general public, given the property's location and surrounding developments. Staff has reviewed the findings of fact for the case and has determined that each have been met. Furthermore, staff recommends approval of the planning application to rezone the subject property from C2 general commercial district to C2P general commercial plan district with the associated concept plan, including the conditions listed in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the Commission have any questions for staff or the applicant?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shanks.
Is there precedent for waiving the Section 415 requirements, or is that kind of an out-of-the-norm thing for the city to recommend us waiving those? Because they have to do like three of the five or something like that?
I would say there really is no precedent for waiving that. We only have a few properties that are commercial in nature that have used the P designation, and most of those are kind of one-off parcels in an office park, north side of 58 Highway. Staff is recommending those based on kind of how Mr. McCumber explained it. The intent of that is more for those amenities like the bike parking and the clock tower and some of those pedestrian-scale amenities to be spread over a larger development that would be enjoyed by customers of multiple retail locations or commercial locations. But the intent of the P District is to get or obtain improved or better quality developments in exchange for flexibilities on different uses and lot sizes and things like that. So in working with the applicant, Mr. McCumber and I did kind of look through the zoning ordinance and determined that being a little more flexible with what the requirements are in exchange for some items that are more site-specific here, like the screening between the residential property to the west, as well as some enhanced building design features that were maybe not so site-specific, like you would see in a shopping center, but more building-specific in the case of this property.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion, or sorry, excuse me, this is a public hearing, my apologies. So with the public hearing, we do invite any members of the public to please come forward if you would like to add any additional comments. We do request that your comments be held to five minutes or less, and if there are additional comments from other members that are similar in nature, that you just kind of state that as opposed to reiterating.
Input or comments from the developer as well.
Yes, and then if you do happen to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. At this time, the public comments for the public hearing are open.
Mr. McCumber said it all, Mike Blythe.
But if you want to make a comment, please, yes, go ahead, and is the microphone on? Thank you, Mr. Zur.
Mr. Chair, we've covered everything pretty well. I'm the owner, Mike Blythe.
Very good, start with your name and address, please.
Mike Blythe, 12309 South Borough Circle, Peculiar, Missouri, 64078. We're a local business owner, we're going to try to, the concept and intent is to make a little bit better-scale contractor garage with some more established Raymore businesses, including my own as an anchor company.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your consideration.
Yes, thank you for the comments. Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
I'm David Will, I live at 234 North Rice Street. I'm directly west of, I think I'm about the only property affected by what he's going to do, and I just support my support and approval for what he's doing, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the comments. Any additional comments at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comments, or public hearing portion. It is 6:16 PM for the record. Now with that, if there's nothing else from members of the Commission, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item, please.
Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Urquia.
I will attempt to make a motion to, that the council accept the staff-proposed findings of facts and approve case number 25007, Hibner Acres Lot 1B rezoning C2 to C2P and the associated concept plan, with the conditions included in the packet for, yeah, for approval.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
Oh, Commissioner Bowie, I've got a motion by Commissioner Urquia, second by Commissioner Bowie, for the Commission to accept case number 25007, Hibner Acres Lot 1B rezoning C2 to C2P. With, sorry, because it's kind of with two different pieces there. And the associated concept plan with the conditions as outlined. Is that close enough, Mr. Zur? Thank you, sir.
You got it.
Okay, great. So again, we have a motion, a second, any discussion of the item?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I think inserted in that motion should also be that with a recommendation to the City Council for approval.
Very good.
So I'll amend my motion to approve the proposed findings of fact and forward case number 25007, Hibner Acres Lots 1B rezoning C2 to C2P and the associated concept plan based off the outlined conditions to the City Council for approval.
There you go, with the recommendation of approval.
Excellent.
Subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Yes, perfect, thank you, thank you for that note.
Second still stands, yes.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further comments or discussion by the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, sorry, I apologize, yes, please, for the roll call.
Commissioner Bowie?
Since Mayor's on video, we just have to say yes.
Okay, in favor, yes, uh-huh.
Commissioner Shanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Yes.
Commissioner Urquia?
Aye.
Mayor Turnbull?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiggins?
Yes, thank you, that will pass 7-0, thank you very much. Moving along, we now move into new business, let me get my agenda, pack it up here. We only have, let's see, we have two items. Our first item is item A, Raymore Blueprint 2045 Comprehensive Plan, that also requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time at 6:19 PM. And with that, I would turn it over to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excited this evening to have before the Planning and Zoning Commission for formal consideration our comprehensive plan, the Blueprint 2045, for the Commission's consideration. We had talked about this at a previous meeting in March for some additional input and kind of a cursory review of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I just wanted to kind of step back and review some of the steps we've taken up until now and kind of highlight what staff intends to carry forward, hopefully to the City Council, and a little bit of an overview of some projects that we'll have kind of queued up, hopefully after the approval of our comprehensive plan. So when we met in, on our March 18 meeting, we kind of had a general discussion of the plan, kind of indicating the next steps and moving forward. The Park Board at their February 25 meeting did pass a resolution recommending adoption of the plan and the Parks Master Plan as their guiding document. City Council had a opportunity at their March 3 work session to have a little more in-depth discussion on the topic of housing and gathering some input into the plan as it relates to that topic, and then again on March 18 for the Planning and Zoning Commission. The hearing tonight would be the required hearing as required by state statute for the Commission to consider adopting the plan as their comprehensive plan for the city. And so we're here this evening to present that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If the Commission does vote to pass the resolution that's before you this evening, it will be on the agenda for City Council for their Monday, May 12 meeting, for their formal consideration and hearing. So we're hopeful to finish out this process and get to work on implementing some of the things that are in this plan. One of the things I wanted to highlight, it's kind of queued up and staff's been kind of doing some outline work internally at the moment, would be kind of the first project that we intend to kick off if we are successful in adopting the comprehensive plan. Section six, which is the implementation chapter of the plan towards the end, provides a guide on accomplishing all of the overarching goals and actions within the plan throughout various departments. It outlines different intermediate, I'm sorry, immediate, short, mid, and long-term goals that the city can work on over the next 20 years under this plan. The most immediate thing that it kind of directs staff to do is provide a thorough review of our development code to make sure that the contents of that code are aligned with what some of the goals are in the comprehensive plan. Our current Unified Development Code was adopted in 2009, it's been amended several times throughout the last several years. And so one of the things that Mr. McCumber and I have been kind of outlining is the process that we will be proposing to kind of do a thorough review of our code, recommend some possible changes to the Commission and the City Council. Some of the topics that we've discussed, we've had a few conversations with the City Council over the last couple of weeks, would really focus on our neighborhood development standards and kind of how some of our subdivisions are being built across the city, looking at some of our use standards and our use table, which guides where certain business uses and commercial uses and residential uses can happen in the city, trying to look at what those standards are and maybe updating a few of those, taking a look at our landscaping and screening code as it relates to commercial development and residential development, and more importantly, when those two uses butt up against each other. And then from a previous work session and a previous review with the Commission, also looking forward to bringing forward our sign code here in the near future, based on some information that we've been working on, based on a couple court cases that have come down, really looking forward to bringing forward a totally new sign code with some new regulations within that. And so that will be, like I said, pending the adoption of the plan by the council. Our department is excited to get to work in updating our zoning code to hopefully improve projects throughout the city over the next handful of years. So with that being said, staff's happy and pleased to present the draft comprehensive plan for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions that the Commission has.
Thank you, Mr. Gress. Do any members of the Commission have any questions for city staff regarding the comprehensive plan, comments, or anything else? Yes, sir, Commissioner Shanks.
I remember months ago, the mayor was talking about how we can do some crime prevention by better design and layouts of properties, and is something like that something that we would be able to put into the comprehensive plan, or is that outside of this? Is there room for anything like that in the plan?
So I do believe that there are a couple references to that in the comprehensive plan at a very high level. Our previous planner, Mr. Eppert, had done some research on SEPTED, is the concept you're talking about, crime prevention through environmental design. It does relate more to like the development code and what requirements staff would place on a property to accomplish the goals of reducing crime. So that is a topic that we've explored to some degree already, and we will probably be looking to incorporate either a specific section about that topic or trying to kind of co-mingle some of those requirements throughout the different sections of our development code. But we've seen those before with uses like gas stations and convenience stores, just trying to make sure there's good visibility for all those, but it applies to all commercial development in general. So you probably will see that as a concept coming forward. Real quickly.
Yes, sir, Mr. Zur.
Just jump in on that real fast, a little bit deep in the woods with regard to that one, but, Mr. Gress, perhaps you can provide the Commission with some input on what those would look like. I assume we're talking about lighting provisions and driveway access points and things like that that would allow for emergency vehicle access, which would necessarily fall under UDC and development code provisions. That's correct, so the thing about lighting, the lighting intensity you see on a property, landscaping is a big thing for, you know, where shrubs and bushes are placed so they don't obstruct views. The concept of it deals with, you know, what public safety officials can see on a property as they're driving by. You don't want to have things planted or installed on a property that's going to obstruct those views or make it more difficult for the, you know, the police department and those officials to accomplish their job in the city. So lighting, landscaping, building orientation, location, all of those concepts would be different sections of our Unified Development Code that would accomplish those.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, since this is a public, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yeah, just a little bit, we kind of touched on it in the past, but I know that there's a great degree of interest by members of the council to ensure that throughout our comprehensive plan, there is a discussion, an ongoing discussion about the percentages of the types of housing that are occurring within our community, not just single-family, multifamily, duplex-type arrangements, but also what is our palatability for rental as well? And working with HOAs often in their development of their areas to restrict the percentages of rentals that are, most of the time, corporate entities have purchased single-family homes, turn those into rentals within our neighborhoods. There's an ongoing discussion, there's a limited amount that we can do legally, but I think HOAs, from what Mr. Zur has found previously, can put some restrictions with regard to that. And we want to work with our HOAs and developers to try to ensure that, you know, there's a, I don't know where the fine point is for capsizing the teeter-totter on that, but we want to be really careful because we don't want to offend anyone or break any laws with regard to what property owners can do with their property, but we also want to balance out what kind of units we're building within our community heavily weighted towards single-family homes. But if we do that, we also want to try to have robust talks with developers and HOAs to ensure that we have another balance of in-place homeowners versus out-of-state landowner or property owners or landlords. And so that's always an ongoing discussion with the council, along with the community, to try to reach that balance. And I don't know that the comprehensive plans has any magic pills that'll settle all of that, but just wanted the PMZ to know that that is an ongoing discussion that will likely roll from the council to the PMZ as we further develop our communities and try to balance that out. But that has always been kind of one of the provocative issues that has come before the council when we're discussing the future of our community. And I just wanted to put that out there, if anyone else would like to discuss it or propose things, or Mr. Zur would like to inject some legal limitations that we can abide by.
Yes, in fact, I got the famous Mr. Zur little finger just a moment ago, so, Mr. Zur, sir.
My view of this is absolutely, the mayor is correct in the desire for staff and the city to work with the developers as well as homeowners and the homeowners' associations in order to make sure that they are building and producing the highest quality of product possible. I think that's absolutely appropriate, and I believe that many of the homeowners' associations out there are adopting provisions with regard to limiting short-term rentals, which can sometimes have a detrimental impact upon communities. The other side of it, from my perspective, the legal side of it is, the courts are often going to err on the side of free utilization of the property, and so it really falls into the developer and the HOA side to be able to try and enforce those on their side with the city staff being supportive of whatever the declarations are that they propose when they come before us. Cool. There's one additional thing I could add, and it's a conversation that's dated a couple years back, I think the Commission's discussed it once or twice, but we've had a lot of discussions around a rental registration program to improve our communication with landlords, whether they're in-state, out-of-state, or just homeowners in general. A lot of times, it's a lot of coordination between a couple different departments, and so our conversations have been more focused on the implementation of a program like that, but we've developed a pretty good framework for what we're trying to accomplish, and so that will likely be part of our Unified Development Code review and Property Maintenance Code at some point in the next year as well.
Very good. I will just state, I'm very interested to hear what that looks like, and I look forward to Mr. Zur and City Council for whatever feedback they have, because obviously that's, there's probably a fine line to walk between what somebody does with their private property and, of course, you know, doing what's best for the city, so. Any additional comments or questions from members of the Commission? Mr. Urquia, sir?
Mine's on the resolution itself. At the bottom of, or at the top of page two, it says Section 1. I'm assuming that was supposed to be Section 2, because there's two Section Ones.
That's probably the case, I do not have the computer in front of me, but staff will double-check that and revise it before we present it to the Chair for their signature.
Sorry, that was on, which page?
Page 2.
Two Section Ones identified under the resolution that we approved for Resolution PG 25-01. If you are implying your proposed motion would be to approve the resolution, thus the alteration or the correction number needed along to it.
Yes, this two-page starts with Resolution PG 2501, okay.
Over the bottom, the first page, it says Section 1.
Mm-hmm.
So over the second page, it says-
Section 1, and then Section 3, 4.
So if you want to make a correction of your motion to approve, subject to amendment of the altering of those sections, that's the way.
Okay, all right, if that's the case, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Do we-
Or, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I didn't even, I don't even believe I asked.
No, I did not close it. I opened it at 6:19. 6:19.
Yes, but I was about to ask for public comment, Mayor had a couple of comments, so that will take us to the public hearing portion. If anybody out there would like to come forward, that might be in the wings that we do not see, please come forward for public comment. Seeing none, I will formally close at 6:33, to make sure we get that checked off. And with that, I would entertain a motion to dispose.
Do we read the resolution or just make a motion to?
I would suggest you make a motion to approve it, so.
Okay.
To approve Resolution PG 2501.
PG 2501, okay. So I'll make a motion then to approve Resolution PG 25-01, subject to the correction of the section that should be titled Section 2 on the top of page 2, to the City Council for approval.
So can I add that?
Please.
Sure can. Okay. Yes.
Uh, do I have a second? Okay. Motion by Commissioner Urquia, second by Vice Chair Pfizer. Let's see if I can figure this out. For the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve Resolution PZ 2501, um, for the adoption of the Blueprint 2045 Comprehensive Plan and for, uh, with the correction regarding the sections, the double section one to reflect section two, uh, and send to the city council, uh, with a recommendation of approval. Cool. Uh, any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll turn it over for roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanks?
Yes.
Commissioner Urquia?
Aye.
Mayor Turnbull?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiggins?
Yes, thank you. That will pass seven, nothing. All right. So we have one more item of new business. That is, uh, item B, case number 25012, Madison Valley Fifth Plat. Seeing nobody else in the audience, I would assume that'll be city staff for information.
All right. So, uh, we have a planning application for Madison Valley Fifth Final Plat. Uh, the property owner, Tony Ward of Blue Springs Safety Storage South LLC, has submitted the application. The project is located east of the Future Sunset Lane and north of Heritage Drive, and also north of Madison Valley Fourth Plat, which was in front of you guys just a couple of months ago. The filed application's requesting final plat approval of the fifth plat of Madison Valley, including 46 residential lots and one tract of land. The property is currently zoned R 1.5, that's Single Family Residential District. To the north is an R1 Single Family Detached Dwelling District. To the south is an R 1.5 dwellings, uh, Single Family Dwelling District. And to the east, we have R1P, a Planned Single Family Detached Dwelling District. And finally, to the west, we have an R 1.5 Dwelling Single Family Detached District. The property in question is a, has a, um, total size of 12.76 acres. There are 46 lots, and, uh, with those 46 lots, including the one tract of land, brings the, uh, overall area to a, uh, density of 3.6 dwelling units per acre. On March 18th in 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard case 25006 Madison Valley Fourth Plat and voted to recommend approval forwarding the case to the city council. Following that meeting on April 14th of 2025, the city council voted eight to zero to approve the first reading of Madison Valley Fourth Plat. Uh, the fourth plat is located just south of Heritage Drive, uh, from this, uh, fifth plat here. So, uh, part of, uh, staff comments for this fifth plat is, uh, an item we'd like to, to bring up. That was, um, a requirement of a, of a, uh, past plat. Um, so, a requirement that was listed in Madison Valley Second Plat Development Agreement noted that the subdivider agrees to install landscape buffers within the common tracks identified as E and F along Sunset Lane. Since the construction of Sunset was delayed, the landscape buffers were proposed to be, and the landscape buffers that were proposed to be completed with the improvements of the Madison Valley Third Plat, um, were never completed since, uh, Sunset was behind schedule. Given that Sunset is nearing completion, the subdivider shall provide the required landscape buffers within the designated tracks along Sunset Lane ahead of acceptance of the fifth plat public impro- improvements and final plat approval. We're just kind of picking that, those last items up here as we're moving through this last plat. With that, staff would like to recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the proposed findings of fact and forward an, uh, approval recommendation with the conditions listed in the staff report to the city council, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any members of the commission have any questions for city staff? Seeing none up here, Mayor, are you good? Thumbs up. Perfect. Uh, with no questions, I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Chairman, all. Third time's a charm.
Mr. Urquia.
I'd like to make a motion that the commission accept the staff-proposed findings of fact and forward case number 25012 Madison Valley Fifth Final Plat to the city council with a recommendation of approval, subject to the three conditions outlined in the packet.
Sound good to me. Do I have a second?
Perfect. I'll second that. That was a good one, Mario.
Motion by Commissioner Urquia, second by Mayor Turnbull for the Planning and Zoning Commission to accept the proposed findings of fact and forward case 25012 Madison Valley Fifth Plat to the city council with a recommendation of approval, uh, subject to the three conditions as outlined. Any discussion of the item? Seeing none, I will, sorry, turn it over to the roll call. Thank you. I'll get it eventually.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith's absent. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie? I'm sorry. Urquia?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Turnbull?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiggins?
Yes, that will pass seven, nothing. Thank you very much, everybody. All right. I believe that will then con- conclude our new business for this evening, so I will turn it over to Mr. Zer for the city council report.
Thank you, Chairman Wiggins. It's a pleasure to be able to provide the city council report. Since your last, uh, commission meeting, there's been one legislative hearing or legislative meeting for the city of Raymore, uh, city council, occurred on April 28th, 2025. During the course of that meeting, there was, uh, no business that had come before the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, there was business of, uh, interest for you as the, um, uh, council considered, uh, governing body members on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mayor Turnbull, uh, indicated a desire to continue serving in the coming year, uh, on the commission. No council member has been voted to be, to serve on the commission, but Mayor Turnbull will get, continue for the next year. So, welcome back, Mayor Turnbull. That would conclude my staff report, or my council report.
As always, Mayor Turnbull, anything to add?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn it over to staff for the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, not in your packet because of the timing of the meeting. I did not have a chance to get the monthly report to you all, but I did place a copy at each of your seats. Um, a couple of things I wanted to highlight. We did finish the month of April with a total of 55 permits. Um, we are well ahead of the progress we would have had last year, this year to date, so it's good to see a lot of housing construction. Um, in some of our neighborhoods, we've had approved over the last couple of years. So really good to see that number where it's at for, for this time of year. Um, we've also had a, uh, fair number of commercial permits here this year. One in April, but, um, eight so far here, um, for, uh, for the year. And so a good, good amount of progress being made just across the board with construction. One thing I did want to highlight, I sent an email to the, uh, commission earlier today, but we will have a ribbon cutting for, uh, an expansion of a business over on the east side of town. Um, if any of you have been to the Quilted Cow, um, which is a quilt shop here in Raymore, um, they have since expanded into the, the vacant building next door to offer some classroom spaces, training spaces, uh, and just more overall storage space and retail space for their business, which is good to see. But they'll have a ribbon cutting this Friday at 11:00 AM, um, over at their location off of 58 Highway. So the commission is more than welcome to attend if your schedule allows. Um, look forward to welcoming that building, uh, again, open to the community. Um, so that would conclude my staff report and happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll move along to item 10, which is our public comment for this evening. If there's any members of the public still around and would like to make a comment, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move into commission member comments. Um, this evening, I will start to my immediate left with Vice Chair Pfizer.
Well, I'd like to thank staff for keeping us informed and preparing everything for us. Um, and, um, I don't have anything to plug tonight, so, um, just, uh, everybody enjoy this nice weather.
Commissioner Urquia?
Uh, as always, I want to just thank the staff for everything you guys do. Um, congratulate Mayor Turnbull on dealing with us for another year. And, uh, Attorney Zer for all your important guidance as we fumble through our motions. Thank you, everyone.
I'll come over here to Commissioner Harrison.
I'd also like to thank the staff for the effort you put in and, uh, the reports that are done really well. Thank you.
Mr. Shanks?
Yeah, I'd, I also say the same thing. The, what you guys have done with this, uh, comprehensive plan is just, I, I've, I've mentioned it before, but it's really impressive, the amount of hours and labor that's went into that, so it's looking really great. I also appreciate the new artwork in the room, uh, so I'm sure you all worked really hard on those things, so, um, no, but it looks good. And then just, uh, yeah, any mothers, Happy Mother's Day.
Commissioner Bowie, sir?
Okay, um, Happy Mother's Day too. I thought that was a good one. Um, this is actually my last, um, um, meeting, because I've officially resigned from the Planning and Zoning Commission after 10 years, um, just moving out of the city. So, um, just wanted to, uh, thank everybody, staff in particular, uh, Mr. Grass there, seeing you grow quite a bit in the last five or six years since you first started. So, um, just appreciate all you guys for all your hard work. Uh, it's been a good 10 years. I think I've been on this, on the, on here with, um, um, you, you were here, right? Yeah, just one other person, so, um, but again, thank the, the mayor as well for all of his, uh, hard work, dedication to the city, and, uh, we've seen quite a bit of growth in 10 years. So just appreciate everybody, and thank you so much for the time and the ability and the growth and the learning that I was able to experience here. All right?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. So, uh, my final comment's going to be about Mr. Bowie. Um, it's hard to find good volunteers, especially those that will stick with us as long as he has. Uh, we're on, we're not only going to just miss him from the PMZ, I'm going to miss him as a, as a resident of our city. Um, I hope that, uh, Overland Park or Lathair, wherever you're moving to, sir, I hope they, uh, uh, they understand the quality of resident, uh, that you have brought to the people of Raymore and, and will bring their way too. Maybe you can get involved somehow with them as well if you're not too tired of dealing with us. But, uh, but thank you so much for serving. Um, I wish you all the best. Um, thank you to the commissioners that, uh, came out tonight, and, uh, appreciate staff as well. Um, I'm looking forward to the next year, uh, working with you. We've got a lot of great things coming. Hopefully, we can, uh, use the comprehensive plan in a positive way for positive growth, and, uh, I just appreciate everybody, uh, that's there tonight. Sorry I couldn't be with you. Um, this conference requires some CEUs, so unfortunately, it's this week. But thank you for allowing me to phone in as well. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Um, yes, Commissioner Bowie, thank you so much for everything on the commission. Um, I always forget how long I've been on. Obviously not 10 years. I want to say maybe I'm in the six or seven range, but, um, you always have, um, a lot of great questions, a lot of good insight. Um, you know, I know you don't always agree with some of the things, but you always provide really good quality responses as to why, um, you maybe have, you know, been against something, and, and I really appreciate that. So thank you very much for all the input that you've, you've provided. Uh, that's helped me grow, uh, as a member of this commission, so I greatly appreciate that. Um, city staff, thank you as always for everything you do. Um, looking forward to 2045, um, and how all that comes about. Um, but on a shorter note, I guess I would, uh, inquire, because it is in here, regarding our next meeting, May 20th. On here, according to this, we have no applicants, um, or no applications. So would we be having a May 20th meeting, or is it updated since here?
We will plan to email the commission by Friday. That is a submittal deadline for that meeting. Um, and so I, I don't expect that we'll have a meeting. We were discussing that today, but didn't want to preemptively cancel. We'll reach out to you all on Friday.
So commission members, please keep an eye on your emails. Um, and of course, yeah, Happy Mother's Day, uh, upcoming to all the mothers out there and, 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 um, yeah, I can't think of anything else. I normally have something else to add, but I guess I don't this evening. So, uh, with that, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Bowie, sir?
Yes?
Second.
Oh, second. Let me get my last second in there. Second, you're right.
Um, I normally, I would just roll right through this, but since we do have to do the roll call, I will take a roll caller with a motion from Commissioner Urquia, second by Commissioner Bowie, to adjourn.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Pfizer?
Yes.
Commissioner Shanks?
Yes.
Commissioner Urquia?
Yes.
Mayor Turnbull?
Yes.
Chairman Wiggins?
Yes. Seven, nothing. We are officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.